I'll call this meeting to order. It's really good to start the morning off with some laughter. This morning, I was reading my little devotion and I was reading the last chapter in John and the first chapter of Acts. And it was about the Christmas story, it was about the Easter story. And I thought, how appropriate for giving hope to the world. So that's what I look forward to in this meeting, that we're going to be doing the business of this board and bringing hope to what we can accomplish in the future. So I look forward to this meeting. We have five items on the agenda and you probably had an opportunity to look through the materials there. So without any further comments from me, or we'll go into the first item, which is summer school, 2018.
All right, well, good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Stout. This morning, I'll briefly share an overview of the proposed summer school plan for 2018. Should you like additional details, we can certainly provide those as well. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction does require that the local Board of Education approve the LEA's summer program. The Department of Public Instruction also establishes some general criteria, which are referenced in the board materials. 2018 is the second consecutive year we have provided summer school and this year's program is modeled after the program the board approved last year. Dates for the summer school this year will be June the 11th through the 19th. However, reteaching of our students can begin after the administration of the EOG at the end of the school, prior to the end of the school year. Just a few overview or highlights that I'd like to point out. We examined our data from last year. We had a 46 percent passing rate of students who retook the summer school test in 2017. Was approximately 391 of the tests passed out of 850 that were administered. This year, we will have approximately 1,500 students to be served. It will be a half-day program. The principals will be given a list of recommended students, but they will have the final say in who attends. We'll have 14 or 15 sites located across the district at elementary and middle schools. Last year, we had so few high school students attend that those high school students attend will go down to the middle school. But last year, we had fewer than 30 high school students participate in summer school. We will use hub transportation again, like we did. Each individual site will be staffed with a site coordinator. The teachers will be about a one to 15 ratio. And we'll have an exceptional children's teacher and support staff at each site. Summer school will cover three through eight math and four through eight reading. And the reason it doesn't cover third grade reading is because you know there's a Read to Achieve camp that covers third grade reading in the summer. Also, high school math I will be included in that. We do not include high school English II because the tests do not come back in time for the end of June because there are open responses on those tests. Students will have intervention or remediation based on their specific goal areas that they're weak. So we use the individual student reports that come with their end of grade. Those are given to the summer school teachers so that they can individualize instruction for the students. And a student may retake the test in math or, and/or reading. So if they are needed in two areas, they can, or just one area. The district office is really working hard this year to try to take some of the burden of summer school office schools, but also working with principals to give them control where they want to have control with hiring teachers and selecting who's going to be offering that instruction in their buildings. So the principals are currently meeting as we speak and this is an item on their agenda and will continue refining that through the rest of this year until the end of, the end of the year for summer school. There are five days of remediation and then two days of retesting for our summer school program. And so if there are any questions, I'll be glad to give you more information. There are, you know, tons of details connected with this and lots of logistics, but I think those are the highlights.
Since this is an action item, may I have a motion to approve the schedule as is presented? Any discussion?
Quick question with regards to when will the parents be notified or the invitations going out to the students?
It will be after the EOGs are given and those are given around the 30th of May this year. And so as soon as those are scored, it's usually the next day or two after the scores come back. The research and accountability department will actually run the invitations, will do a mail merge, and schools are being asked to personally contact the parents prior to a written invitation going home. And then the written invitations will be sent home by day.
Beth, is there a reason why we have such a low number of high school students participating?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
So really, you cannot change a student's grade based on the summer school and we don't have an exit exam anymore, so the students do not have to pass the exam. So it's hard to get high school students to agree. Part of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's criteria is that it is up to a parent whether the student attends or not. So we cannot require a student to attend.
So if they don't pass the EOC and they've passed the class, do they still receive the credit?
They still receive the credit, yes. So there's little, there's little incentive for a high school student to come back. And that's what the principals found last year, it was difficult.
Looks like there'd be little incentive to take the test.
Right, so it's easier to get, you know, parents to get their elementary and middle school students to come back than it is high school parents.
Beth, what are we, what are we doing this year as opposed to last year to get the high value-added teachers to commit?
So last year, teachers sent in their information to the central office. We collected that. This year, each site coordinator will be responsible. So we're hoping that with that personal touch at a building, that they can go out and say, will you please come do that, you know, and a little more personal recruitment.
That was my question, follow-up with the Reverend Churchwell. In other words, I think the last day for teachers is June 10th, was give or take. And this starts basically in that state. So they're ready to, like kids, ready to go out and play in the sandmalls.
But they can do their remediation prior to that, though, can't they?
They may start as soon as the EOG scores are back. They can begin doing some remediation while the kids are still in school. But for it to count as summer school with North Carolina Department, with NCDPI, it has to also have days after the school year. So you'll notice that three of these days overlap teacher work days, which helps us also save money on summer school. So teachers that agree to do that will be teaching summer school in the morning and they'll have their work days in the afternoon.
Is it individualized instruction for each student where they score low on the EOGs? Or is it a overcap of the entire semester or the year?
So individualization is around goal areas, so it may be as broad as fractions. So for example, in fourth grade, almost 50 percent of the math EOG is around fractions. And so if a student has not done well in that area, they would get a lot of attention around fractions. So that may be a whole group of students getting that fraction. So that's, that's the individualization part.
Well, in math in those early grades, isn't it kind of historical that, that we have done, I won't say poorly, but we've not done well in fractions and measurement?
That is correct.
And that's across the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving right along, policy revision 3450 on class ranking. You know that we had, as a board, asked staff to go back, particularly Dr. Folger and Will Lane, to go back and talk with the principals and make sure they had the input that they needed and hopefully that those principals also had, had in their discussion, some information, discussion with parents as well as with their advisory councils and teachers. So, Beth?
Yes, ma'am. So on behalf of Mr. Lane and the high school principals who are in a principals' meeting this morning, the staff is bringing forward a proposal to withdraw or table the requests for revisions to policy 3450 class rank this morning. Principals were interested in replacing the Val and Sal with Latin honors, but felt that the possibility of running a dual system, that was discussed when the board discussed this policy in December, I believe, December or January, that running a dual system eliminated the critical advantages of students being, the advantage of more students taking arts and CTE if we were still running the Val and Sal program. And also, the advantage of students really competing against self instead of others. And so they also, as Chairman Tom, as Madam Chair said, principals agreed that more student and parent input were definitely needed, that they had made this decision without surveying parents and students. Lastly, with multiple students, they are asking themselves, will multiple students actually be tied for the Val and Sal? So we're projecting that with our data, but the first graduating class will be the graduating class of 2019. And so they also would like to see what the actual data, what the actual data say. And then, based on that data, then survey parents and students and bring that back to the board after that.
You do have on here, this is an action item, but since it was already tabled, I don't know, Alec, you're the parliamentarian, if you really need to vote on it since we're not changing anything. Yes, sir?
Madam Chair, we actually are changing the revised legal and cross-references according to this for March 20th, so.
No, it's not. Huh?
That doesn't have to be approved.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be approved.
Okay.
So it can just remain tabled?
It just remains tabled. Everybody okay with that? Thank you. You know, we just came back from a little parliamentary procedure class and I want to make sure we're doing everything right, so.
Maybe you should have sent me, Madam Chair.
Actually, we saw a very entertaining, this is a sidebar, a very entertaining school board meeting. And if you saw it, you would think that we were the model of school boards, I can assure you.
That is untrue.
Next is the capacity projections and facility needs. Steve, thank you for providing us, or Maureen, ever who did it, with readable charts.
You're welcome. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll try to summarize it pretty quickly. If you have any specific questions or want more detail, just let me know. But to start out with, every year, we do a, we have a, capacity, out-of-capacity charts that are provided by ORED and the integrated planning for school and community update. So we're going to review that today. We'll look at the operational capacity, which is basically our brick and mortar with factoring in some transit movement in the classrooms. And also our campus capacity, which is also includes our mobile classrooms. Important about that, mobile classroom, because if we look at the campus capacity, then we can see the mobile classroom needs, especially as it pertains to House Bill 13 and House Bill 90, as far as classroom sizes for K through 3. Once we're done with that, then we'll go through the long-term classroom construction needs and that's going to go back into the operational capacity when we look at the brick and mortar, to identify what we need for schools going forward. And then we'll just do a quick overview of the joint education funding policy so we can look at the prioritization of the schools that were identified in the out-of-capacity charts. So as mentioned, ORED annually provides this information. It's a combination of studies that ORED does, they do land use studies, they do population, student population projections, they go through the whole process. And also, we have certified educational planners look at our facilities with the staff and determine how many spaces we actually have, what can be used where, and how it applies to our student population projections. So when you look at this, the first sheet you'll see is the operational capacity. And on the screen, you'll notice that it looks a little different than the paper that you have. And the reason why it looks different on the screen is the first two columns on these nice sized charts we have are for capacities. I just want to use it for capacities for next year because that's where it's most important for us to look at, next year, how we react. And also in 2021, 22, because that's when the full effect of House Bill 13 comes into play with class size reduction for K3. So what you see there, what you see on the screen up here, though, is you see capacity projections for 10 years out. I just summarized to here on this big chart so we can actually see it a little bit better and focus on the years that are most important to us in this conversation right now. So when I look at capacities for 2018, 19, if I look at Bell Fork Elementary, I see I've got a capacity, brick and mortar capacity, basically, of 607 students. I've got students in there, I've got 673 students for 2018, 19, projected for next year. If I go off to '21, '22, it's up to 710 students. And if I went out full 10 years to '27, '28, it'd be 675 students. Okay, so you can see, as we know in the past, red means that we're overcapacity, green means we're 95 percent below capacity, yellow means we're 95 to 100 percent, and orange means we're 100 to 105 percent overcapacity. This year, when we start going into the mobile capacities, we'll talk about a little bit more, when I look at elementary capacities, and this is pretty important to remember, the rules were thrown out the window. All of a sudden, when we talk about capacities, we were talking about a large group of students in a school and you had some flexibility how you can move students from one, I mean, move around the school, the school grades and the grade levels, it could be moved around a little bit. Now, we've got fixed grade level class size restrictions. So even though we may have, for example, if I have a hundred, if I have a grade level, one classroom for every grade level, kindergarten through six, that's six classrooms. Well, I may have, I may have up to 26 students per fourth grade and per fifth grade, but then next year, I can only have 20 students for grades K through 3. Well, that, that equates up to about 130 students, right? What happens if I got 22 students in fourth grade, 25 students in fifth grade, and I may have 19 students here, 18 students here, and then at one grade level, let's say third grade, has 20 students already. So all the other grade levels are under capacity, right? We're still under capacity as a whole, but one more third grader, what do I do? I'm out of capacity even though as a whole, I'm, I'm overcapacity, even as a whole, though, I'm undercapacity because one more third grader means I have to have one more classroom. Where's that come from? Well, if I've got to pull out of fourth grade, then you know I've got class sizes that are going to be 20, 30, 40 students. So that impacts us that way. Does that make sense? The reason why I mention that is even though we're using the charts and we say that we're undercapacity or we're at capacity and stuff, please understand that with grade levels...
It's a different...
It's a whole different, whole different way of looking at it. And so what, when you look at these mobile capacity charts going forward on the next sheet, please understand that when you see yellow, that's always been considered undercapacity in the past because that's 95 percent to 100 percent capacity. So we're getting close, but we're not overcapacity. When you see yellow now for elementary schools, please understand that there's a potential at that point in time that we're going to have to take some, some kind of preventive action or some corrective action to make sure that we stay within the state mandates. So even though we may be undercapacity as a school, what we may be is overcapacity in one grade level, so we're going to have to make some adjustments, pull something out of this, or maybe look at an enhanced program, or doing different things to make it happen, or put a mobile classroom in. So that's one of the things that we had to look at when we actually tried to say, okay, well, how many mobile classrooms do we need? Does that make sense?
Is this an action item or can we have a discussion on it? I've got a quick question then with regards to the example used at Bell Fork Elementary. Our capacity is 607, at 18, 19, we're 673. And then we go up to a high of 710 in 2021, '22.
That's right.
By the time we get out to 27, 28, we're back down to 675. And I see that appears to be on several of the, what is driving the ebbs and flows of the capacity numbers, sir?
Well, in your IPSEC report that's also attached with your package, they address that. And one of the things that they address is that we look at resident live births as well. While resident live births throughout the state are a good indicator of what's going to happen in kindergarten, so the birth rate at one year, five years later, you can anticipate what kindergarten's going to be. Ozil County's a little bit different. It's still, it's still a factor. But the other factor is, is we have a lot of transient young, young students coming in too because of the military. So when you see this, what you're looking at is they factor in the military, which is pretty stable right now, and also the resident live births, which have been decreasing over the last couple of, couple of years, and they're starting to stabilize out. So that's why you see an increase and then you start seeing it decreasing out again.
So this is more of a trend data?
It's a trend data. Mm-hmm. And as, and as mentioned in the past, that once you get past five years on these projections, it gets a little bit more vague and the accuracy may be not as, not as, as well as what it's going to be in 18, 19. But at the same time, it's, it's our best, best efforts with NC State to give us a projection of what it's going to look like in 10 years.
Those numbers don't crash what they were in the winter school, for instance. If you look at Metta View, they continue to climb. So is the data that we're getting in from ORED targeted to the local populous areas?
It's targeted to the local populous areas and also what they call them as planning segments. And so each, each district or each region, they actually look at, they look at our land use studies that we do and also they look at the actual developments and housing in that area and they can project out based on that. And historically...
So for instance, Bell Fork is kind of isolated now in terms of growth, landlocked. Whereas these other, like Metta View has a lot of land, a lot of development going on, so naturally, the trend's going to be continuing worse so than what Bell Fork would be because of the landlocked that Bell Fork has itself surrounding the school.
Thank you. Historically, I mean, and I've asked ORED to come up, give me an update on the number because it's been about two or three years since I've gotten the last number. But for a single-family unit, this is a good rule of thumb, is it's .46 students per single-family unit. So if we had 100 single-family units in a development, that's going to be 46 students, all right? Then you can break it down, 51 percent's going to be elementary school and 24 middle and such, so you can break it down that way. So we can actually get a good feel for when a new development comes in, how many students is going to be impacted by it.
Well, Steve, looking at Carolina Forest, or just let me mention this about them, you know, they're so overcrowded now, there's, the, the traffic situation there is totally unsafe because of the volume of vehicles that go through there every day. And somehow, we missed all of that growth. The first year it opened, it had two wings not used, and now, look how it is.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't know how that slipped by us or by ORED.
Well, when the school was built in 2004, they were just developing Carolina Forest subdivision.
Right.
And as a matter of fact, that's when the land, we were offered land for that because that was an enticement for people to actually move in that, that development. I think the Tootens gave us the land and they built the development at that point in time. They didn't factor in that across the road, you're going to have Carolina Plantation. And Carolina Plantation was another 12 unit development. So when you look at that, and you go look at that .46, you can do some calculations in math, you can see that we've actually, instead of becoming a neighborhood school, it also incorporated Carolina Plantation. And because of that, what's happened is we've seen increased growth that we had to address going forward.
And that corner lot is still up for building by Carolina Plantation.
That's right.
Steve, can you go back to where you were speaking, one, get one more student in a classroom, cause another classroom? Was that not fixed in HP90?
HP90 allows us to maintain our student rates that we have this year for next year and 2018, 19. Then from 1920 school year, grades K through 3, and tell me if I'm wrong, Barry, but K through 3 go down to 19 students per classroom. Then 2021 goes down to 18 students per classroom. And when you go to 21, 22, that's when HB13 goes into full effect where you have 18 students in kindergarten, 16 in first grade, 17 in second and third.
And when it comes to each classroom, there was no flexibility in that?
No flexibility. No flexibility.
But Barry, we don't have to fill those classrooms with a total of, we could do 14 students. Because if we don't, right, we can't go over. But I think this board has been adamant that it's not a good education, a sound education decision to regroup if you have a student over and have to make a new classroom.
Now, if, if a classroom does go over, I think overall, I think there's, I think district-wide, you have, you have the capability of averaging out some, but the classroom specifically, you can't. You're not supposed to.
We will have some opportunities, I hope, in the future for some waivers for districts like ourselves that are fast-growing, military-related. Those are two key topics that we're going to talk to the General Assembly about. They just said this time, this year, they weren't going to address the waivers, but they would like, look at it as we move forward. So that's something to address with your local legislature if you can.
And if you have any other questions about this, these charts, please feel free to call me. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into them and we can break out in numerous, numerous levels or numerous ways. One of the things to, just as a summary for this, though, is that elementary schools, we look at a 10-year projection of an increase of 562 students. Middle schools, for 10-year projection, increase of 485 students. High schools, we see the growth, largest growth is an increase of 1,485 students. And then total system growth for the next 10 years is 2,532.
Speaking?
2,532. So that was, that was most of the hard stuff right there, as far as going through the details and numbers. But a couple of other things we do want to talk about is when we go into the class, mobile classrooms that are going to be required going forward because we have to meet House Bill 90 and 90 requirements, is when you look at the, when you look at the schedules in 2018, 19, based on, based on the capacity charts that we have, and these are the, and these just came out this, in this month, and the most accurate data we have, we're looking at having a total of five additional mobile classrooms that are going to be needed to meet the class size requirements for 2018, 19 in elementary schools. That would include two in Bell Fork Elementary, one in Carolina Forest Elementary, one in Dixon Elementary, and one in Stateside Elementary. If you go out to the next year, we're looking at 14 classrooms, additional classrooms besides the five, so it'd be 19 total at that point in time. Then another eight the next year in 2021. And then, once HB13 goes into full effect, we're looking at 16 additional classrooms there for a total of 43 mobile classrooms or classrooms that have to be addressed in the next three or four years.
So every year, Bear Fork Elementary School will increase in mobile classrooms?
That's right. Remember, and part, part of the reason for that, they're increasing mobile classrooms because the class, class size requirements are shrinking. I mean, class, I mean, number of students in a class are shrinking. So students, the students may be close to being the same. But because we have to take one less student out of every class, that requires another classroom or one or two classrooms. And if you're already at capacity, that throws us into that situation where we have to address it.
Although we have till 2020, 21 to implement this, is there any reason we can't accelerate putting those mobiles out there so that we're not in the last year having to scramble to put 16 of them?
That's one of the things we're looking at continuously and, and some of it is just the funding of it as well. So I'll go through that in just, just a few minutes.
Okay. I think you addressed it in another, or a previous meeting, how long does it take us from the time we approve binding to get it, get it on site and set up?
It depends if we're, if we're purchasing a mobile classroom, it probably takes about three months. I'd say for, either, either way, three or four months would be a good rule of thumb. If we can get them. Because everybody else...
Because we're not the only ones going to be buying.
Well, Steve, I guess the next question should be, what are we going to do for this coming year?
Well, I'm glad you asked that.
That was my cue, wasn't it?
One, one thing before we go into that, though, I would like to mention that while we're focused on elementary school, Jacksonville Commons Mill is out of capacity as well, so we're probably going to have to look at bringing in some mobile classrooms. so we're probably going to have to look at bringing in some mobile classrooms there coming up next year. Okay, so when I talk about mobile inventory, so we talked about mobile needs, well, let's talk about what we have first, okay? Currently, we have approximately two hundred and twenty mobiles on all sites, okay? That includes bus garage, central office, all schools in total. And about two hundred and one instructional mobile classrooms, or mobile classrooms that are on the campuses, school campuses. That may, they may be used for office or office requirements as well as instructional purposes. Or they also may be built prior to nineteen seventy, and because they were built prior to nineteen seventy, if they're used, even if they're used for storage, I'm not going to try to move them to another location, because it just wouldn't make, I mean, they're not, if I got a nineteen sixty mobile classroom, I don't think I want to take a chance on moving it to another school.
So those that were built in nineteen seventy are temporary?
I, yep. I took it down as soon as I could. Okay? And nineteen, like I said, nineteen of them were, if you're used for storage. Of the nineteen identified that we could use for repurposing, if you're going back and looking at the charts, an example would be Hunter's Creek Middle. Well, they're going to be going out of capacity in the next couple of years. It doesn't make sense for me to move a lot of mobile classrooms out of Hunter's Creek Middle and then the next year, move them back into it. So there's some situations where I'm not going to want to, or we're not going to, we're not going to want to move mobile classrooms just because they're going to be needed there in a year or two.
They have their own little mobile village.
Right, yeah, what it was called. So what I'm looking at, so what we're looking at, the total mobile inventory we have, we probably have close to thirteen to fifteen mobiles that are available for relocation. And when you look at the plans for temporary spaces, we talked about year two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, we need nine mobiles, mobiles on five campuses, and that includes Belfork Elementary, Carolina Forest Elementary, Dixon's Elementary School, Stateside, and Jacksonville Commons Middle. I put an asterisk on Carolina Forest Elementary because they have, they're already maxed out as far as, as far as code is concerned for the city of Jacksonville, and so we're going to have to get a special use permit to add any additional ones out there. We've already talked to them and stuff, and we're in the process of submitting a special use permit.
I'm a little confused. On our previous slide there for eighteen, nineteen, we're showing five classrooms needed.
And if you look at, yeah, if you look at the next slide with the middle school, it has four additional ones.
I get you, all right, thank you.
All right. The cost to move these is roughly thirty thousand dollars. I think it was twenty-nine thousand, some odd dollars and change, but it just rounded up to thirty thousand for conversation. And it's about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We already have this in the current budget and we're in the process of making these moves right now for the next year.
What is the additional cost? I know it doesn't include it. What's the additional cost for connecting them with internet, with, oh, it is, access to the PA system?
Access to the technology, putting the sidewalk out there if we need it, furniture, putting ramps in if we need it as well.
Do these?
And these are already ours.
These are already ours. These are new ones.
Do these have restroom facilities that sewer's going to need to be connected?
Some do, some don't.
And the internet, is that going to be fiber, or we will be bouncing from the main building?
It's going to be fiber. There'll be fiber going into the classrooms. Year two thousand and nineteen and twenty, we'll need fifteen mobile classrooms, fourteen for elementary school and one for middle school, which would be Swansboro Middle would be the additional one. We can relocate approximately five existing mobiles at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're going to have to put in ten additional units at a cost of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're talking about a cost of nine hundred thousand dollars to make these, make this happen for the, for the school year nineteen twenty. Thing is, is because we're making it ready for the school year nineteen twenty, we have to start preparation in eighteen, nineteen to make it happen. So this is where we have to coordinate our funding for that purpose, so we can actually get the additional mobiles that's needed and moving. Twenty twenty-one, we'll need additional thirteen units, that's another approximately eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that's going to happen in nineteen and twenty. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll need another sixteen units, which will be approximately one million dollars. Now that being said, once we get to twenty-one, twenty-two, I would, I would hesitate, I would be hesitant to say we're going to need a million dollars there, because at that point in time, we're scheduled to open up a new school at that point in time, albeit in the stump sound area or the Catherine Lake area. I think right now, we're migrating our thoughts to the stump sound area, but that would take some pressure off the Dixon Elementary School as well.
When we go back to our operational charts here. I'm assuming that we're pretty much all in agreement, we need new schools. And we have projected schools on the schedule. So my question is then, why would we not also project for those, if we're bringing a school on in twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-two, twenty-four, or if we're able to accelerate a schedule, why wouldn't we project those numbers down there as well so that we could balance the load?
Yes, we are. And what, remember, that sheet right there, just, what I did is I put just the two capacity columns in there, but when you're looking at the color sheet, the color segment for all the student population, they factor in all ten of those school years, and you'll notice, when you start looking at that, you'll notice that we've already factored in the other school that was identified. The two that we haven't identified down, down at the middle, I mean, that's going to be for twenty-three and twenty-five, years twenty-three and twenty-five, is because we haven't said it's going to be a middle school or high, a middle school or elementary school yet. I didn't want to put a number in there that would skew all the numbers.
Could you provide us with a larger chart than that to read?
It's in, it should be in your entry report as well, last two pages on your entry, entry report.
All right, that's a little bit, thank you.
Steve, talking about the...
We'll have to make all in the same size as that one.
Talking about the additional schools in the Dixon area and the Richland, Catherine's Lake area, would we, would staff recommend that we put mobile classrooms there now if there's a real good chance that we will be able to build a school?
In the stump sound area, I mean, one of the things that we have to be concerned about is, because it's state mandated, unless we can get some kind of a waiver, we'll have to put some mobiles, mobiles in there just to meet state requirements.
That would save us a lot of money, is what I was, what I'm thinking is.
What I would, what I would hope that we can work out in the future is, if, if we have schools under construction, that the state would allow us to do a waiver, because we are trying to address the capacities and stuff. So that's one of the things that we probably would recommend going forward as well, that if we have schools under construction, if they allow us, instead of us moving additional mobiles and to address the needs, give us a waiver in that situation.
You would think you're having some kind of group based clause in, you know what I mean? We're doing everything we can do.
Wouldn't our county commissioners kind of agree with that philosophy, that we get some kind of waiver, because ultimately, it's going to be a cost saving to them as well?
I think that's probably what they are hoping as well.
Okay.
Okay, so when we look at our long-term needs, we just talked about the, about the short-term needs with the mobile capacity, but when we talk about long-term needs, this is what we're talking about, the construction, there is some of what we talked about earlier. It's based on our operational capacity, not, remember, campus capacity is mobiles, now we're going into the operational capacity. And it's that large sheet that you see right here, it's the first sheet, and it's in black, the title's in black, okay? So that's with no mobile classrooms. This is what we use to determine what we need for construction, construction requirements. So if I look, if I look at the sheets, and then also I look at the utilization, if I look at the map of Onslow County as a whole, you'll see that I have ten schools that are out of capacity. Okay, that's Belfork, Carolina Forest, Dixon Elementary, Northwood Elementary, Hunter's Creek Elementary, I mean, Heritage Elementary, or Richlands Elementary, Richlands Primary or Heritage Elementary, Swansboro Elementary, Stateside Elementary and such. One thing I, that you'll see up there on that chart, that chart right there, that graph is, this was done prior to the redistricting, this map right here, so where Richlands Elementary is now, that would not be in a red section right now, it's just the Richlands Primary or Heritage Elementary. But I wanted to show you guys where we had needs on this. If I look at the priorities, and the highest needs, that I'm looking at for two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, okay? And I sorted, we sorted it by percent of capacity, okay? The top five schools that are out of capacity are Carolina Forest Elementary with a hundred and thirty-seven percent overcapacity, Dixon Elementary School at a hundred and thirty-seven percent overcapacity, Heritage Elementary School, a hundred and thirty-two percent, Southwest Elementary, a hundred and twenty-four percent, and Swansboro Elementary, a hundred and six percent. Remember, this is brick and mortar, not the mobile classrooms, but this tells us what we need as far as construction is concerned. If I take it out to twenty-one, twenty-two, when HB thirteen goes into full effect, you'll notice that Dixon Elementary School is scheduled, is projected to be a hundred and seventy percent overcapacity. Carolina Forest is still...
That's just K four.
That's just K four. Carolina Forest is a hundred and fifty-two percent. Heritage Elementary, one forty-eight, and you can see the rest as well.
It was a reminder board. I know we moved fifth grade over to Dixon Middle, but that wasn't a permanent solution.
No, it's going to have to be moved because they're needed.
Quick question with regards to our charts, this one and the previous one you got there. Blue Creek Elementary School is down there about three-quarters of a percent, when Southwest Elementary is up in a hundred and some percent. Is there any way of balancing that?
When you, when you look at the district lines, and we look at, if you remember, we've done redistricting several times in the last couple of years, that's one of the things we look at. When you look at Belfork or Blue Creek, as an example, Blue Creek is low and Southwest Elementary is high. If you already look at the district lines, Southwest Elementary, Blue Creek has taken almost everything all the way up, up to, to the borderline of Southwest Elementary School right now. So what they're, Southwest Elementary is actually looking down more to the, to the nine mile and southern areas over in that area.
Where the relief will come, basically, is when the new school in the Dixon area...
That's right.
Would relieve Dixon Southwest Elementary.
So, so in that process, if you can imagine, so if we get a new middle, elementary school in the stump sound area, then Dixon, the Dixon Elementary area could potentially take over Verona and some other areas and relieve some pressure out there, because it's right down that road. So we can do some things, realignment at that, at that point in time, if we have another school down there. But it is pretty much landlocked right now. There's not much give and take for Blue Creek to take over much more Southwest Elementary, unless you start creating this island around, around the school itself.
Steve, does Angola go to Dixon or to Blue Creek, or by Southwest?
I can't remember right off the top of my head.
It's on the other side of Harris Creek.
Angola?
Does it go to?
That goes to Dixon.
Dixon. So does High Hill Road up come to Southwest?
I'd have to go back and look at the maps, I'm not sure.
You should know that.
I know.
And I hear what you're saying with regards to the district, just looking at it from a practical standpoint, that if we have a school that's being underutilized, is there any way that we can get some kids into that area to give some relief to one of the other level areas? And I don't like to redistrict any more than anybody else does, but I understand that.
Yeah.
We're being pressed, how many rooms do we have vacant at that particular school, or do we simply have?
If you don't mind, I'm going to stand up just for a second.
I don't think there are rooms vacant, but as we reduce the class size, you're going to utilize every room you have.
Williams, what you're going to see is right here, I understand, right here, that's where Southwest, Southwest Elementary is right here, here's Blue Creek Road is right here. And we pretty much, we've pretty much done everything we can. Now, we may be able to bring, and it's just a handful of students in this area right here, when we looked at before, and that's potential to look at, and we do it every year. I mean, I understand what kids, part of our education funding agreement, is that we reevaluate and try to align districts and maximize usage of the seats that we already have.
Right.
So that's one of the things that we have, is right here on the edge, where Blue Creek Elementary is. So here you see all this, so if we have, if we can pull some of this back and bring it into here, that would be helpful, and if we can pull some back, bring it into here, it would help as well.
Well, one of the reasons is we're projecting a new school somewhere out here, so you'd be able to take all those students there as well, so, you know, that would, that would be the time to take care of... What you're saying is, like, basically what you're saying is, if we expanded much further out, kids will be going by Southwest Elementary to get the belt, I mean...
No, I understand that. We just took care of that in another district, so I understand the process.
But that's, I know what you're asking.
It looks all lopsided compared to all the others.
It does, it does.
I used to call it the whack-a-mole. I don't think I remember that enough, but I used, where you used to pop, pop on one side, all of a sudden, something else pops up and you...
Right.
So we continually look at district realignments, every year we look at it now, and see what we can do to improve it. We also have to factor in, okay, is there any construction coming up in the future? Should we do a redistrict now, and then a year later do a redistrict, or a few years later do another redistrict, or should we wait and try to accommodate it? So there's a lot of decisions that have to be made in that recommendation that goes forward.
Are there areas in Blue Creek right now that we have potential, or there's something on the future horizon that they're going to be building more units in that area?
In that process, as far as the land use studies, I think, we're looking at some growth, but you'll see it in the chart itself, it's very nominal, so. All right, so we look at the shortage of seats for elementary schools. In the Richlands area, and when I, when I talk about the Richlands area, we're talking about Richlands Elementary School, Heritage Elementary School for next year, or Richlands Primary. We're talking about Stateside Elementary, it also included Carolina Forest and Somerset in that process too, because it was important to know that, once we put a new school in, that whole area is going to be redistricted to, to load balance across all the schools, similar to what you were talking about earlier. And so when I look at Richlands area, the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen operation, operational capacity, I'm going to be eighty seats short in the Richlands area. In twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm going to be two hundred and fifty-seven seats short, and then ten-year out projection would be two hundred and ninety-four, almost three hundred seats short for all.
Does that take into account plant construction in Catherine, Catherine Lake area?
That doesn't take in, count any, any construction yet. The Dixon Elementary, Southwest Elementary School area that we just talked about, right now, I'm about four hundred and forty-one seats short. How am I addressing that? We're using mobile classrooms, we're also, fifth grade's going to Dixon Middle School. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we're looking at seven hundred and twenty-five seats, and then it's going to settle out to about seven hundred and nineteen seats with the ten-year projection. But remember, that's the ten-year projection, it's not a, it's not a hard, hard number that we're looking at. The other thing to note, that in the Richlands area, no student populations are projected to be over a thousand students per school. In Dixon, we're already looking at enrollment exceeding a thousand and growing faster, and the population's growing faster, and it's landlocked. We don't have much room to, to do any kind of realignment in that situation. So right now, if, if the board was asking, staff would recommend that we look at doing a stump sound elementary or Dixon Elementary School, another Dixon Elementary School prior to doing Catherine Lake, just because of that need. So when we talk about optimal school locations, okay, this, this is a report that we provided, I believe, back in October last year, and it's a student optimum, I mean, it's a elementary school site optimization scenario. And what you'll see, you see the two circles on the, on the sheets? One is over in the Catherine Lake area, and one is over in the Folkestone area. Those are the areas that ORED, or NC State, came back and looked at what happens if we factor in all of the Richlands area schools that we talked about, all of the Southwest Elementary and Dixon Elementary Schools, and you back, and you optimize the location for a new school, those two areas are where they say, that's where we, that's where you would need to build a school, somewhere in that area. Now, that optimization circle is, is optimization, you may be a mile or two off, away from that as well, but it's still going to serve the needs of that, that area.
Quick question with regards to future years. If we cite in those two particular areas, what effect does that have on the middle and high schools in that area?
Middle, the middle school would be, would be, for Dixon Middle School, wouldn't be impacted, because we, we built based on board's recommendation to increase capacity, and because of that, we were able to bring the fifth grade in as well, so we will be okay in that situation. When you're going over into the Richlands area, it would have, we have Northwood Park Middle that's scheduled for refurbishing or enhancement, I mean, enlarging coming up, so we take some of them there. Then you have Southwest Middle, which is over capacity right now, we'd have to look at in the future. And also, Trexler Middle, we're repurposing some of the old Richlands Elementary School, and they have some mobiles, so they're going to be okay as well. So we're going to be somewhat okay in the, in the middle school area. I'm not going to say it's perfect, but we're going to be a lot better off in the middle school area than we are in the elementary.
But in the Dixon area in particular, we have the ability, we have the land and some of the structures to build out Dixon High School.
That's right. And Dixon High School will be the same thing, we're, we're in that process right now. So when you look at the...
Steve, I think...
Like I said, that old Richlands High School area, the football field and all of that, that's available to make sure we have more growth in that area.
So when you, when you're looking at the optimal locations, one of the things we want... So when you, when you're looking at the optimal locations, one of the things we want to mention too is that the old Dixon Middle School site that, uh, we just moved out of, okay, is approximately twenty-three acres, but of that, you're gonna take about six or seven acres for, for parking and also for the, for the, for the, the auxiliary gym and the additional eight to twelve classrooms that we have that we're repurposing from the old Dixon Middle School. So you're gonna have about fifteen, sixteen acres that are available for a, a, a new, uh, elementary school at the old Dixon Middle School site.
That's not enough.
When we look at, when we look at our growth and our patterns and stuff, it's, we can put a small school in there, but you're, you're restricted to any kind of growth. And, uh, we, we tried to put the foot, the footprint of some of our schools into that fifteen, sixteen acres, and we didn't, couldn't find anything that would fit appropriately. And so we would have to go back and do some redesigning.
Is it possible in the future we could do a large split high school in that area to accommodate future growth?
Anything's possible. Okay, middle school utilization reports, um, that's where we just talked about a little bit. Trexler Middle School, we've got some mobiles there. And also we're repurposing, uh, some of Richlands Elementary School. We approximately, I believe it's eight classrooms off the top of my head. And, uh, so that's gonna take off, take the pressure off of Richlands El, Richlands area. Commons Middle, this is where we're, we're running out of space right now, but also we're projected in twenty twenty-four, I believe, to, uh, to add additional capacity for Northwoods Park Middle. And because of that, that would be a time that we'd be looking at some realignment to absorb some of the Commons Middle. And then we have Southwest Middle School. Um, it's pretty steady growth, pretty steady, um, enrollment, so we're gonna manage that through mobile classrooms right now. All right. Okay, joint education funding policy. The reason why I mention this is because we've talked about capacities and needs, and this always comes back to the, to the funding of, of the school construction. Um, as we know, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through this, uh, in a lot of detail because we've done this several times, but, uh, basically, the funding policy, which was established in two thousand fourteen, allowed us to build five, allows us to, allows five schools in the next ten years, and also it's an event horizon. So basically, we're looking out every, I mean, ten years out at any given time. So back in two thousand fourteen, we looked all the way out to twenty twenty-five. Well, now we'd be looking out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight for, for future schools. Um, some of the requirements, and the board just mentioned this earlier, is that, um, all other solutions, solutions such as redistricting have been exhausted prior to building new schools. So we wanna maximize the seats that we have available that are used before we ask for more seats. And in that funding policy, the plan was that we were doing a Dixon Middle School, which we completed. Uh, Richlands Elementary, uh, was actually bumped up a year. Okay, because we had, uh, we, we were good stewards of the, of the funds that were available. They had good financing, uh, at the time. And bids and construction came in well, so we were able to save some money, and so we were able to do once, go early on the next school. Then we have two more schools, the West Central and New Southern Elementary is what was identified in the, in the poli, in the funding agreement. The West Central Elementary was Catherine Lake, and the New Southern Elementary was in the stump sound area. Since that time, we're looking at, since, since two thousand fourteen, we've seen the growth as it's going right now. And staff would recommend that we switch that, make su, New Southern, the New Southern Elementary or Stump Sound Elementary a higher, higher priority than the Catherine Lake Elementary. That's not saying that they're not both needed at the same time. We want them both at the same time. Okay? And I think, I think, uh, there's a lot of communication going on back and forth. Can we get them done at the same time? Hopefully we can, and if we can't, can we expedite the next one a year early? So that's some of the things we're looking at right now as well. So, but, but based on, based on the capacity charts and studies, it looks like, uh, Stump Sound is an elementary school before Catherine Lake does. Then you have, uh, Northwoods Park Middle School expansion. Then you had a Midwest school, which wasn't identified yet, but that will probably, we're looking at, uh, based on the numbers and everything, we'd be looking at another elementary school, and maybe it's gonna be over in the, over to address the, the needs of Carolina Forest and Belfork Elementary in that area and stuff right now, because that's, that's an area that's, that is grown and, and we're having a hard time meeting the capacity needs there as well. So right now, with the school's construction, construction needs that we're talking about is Steve Park, Richlands Elementary is already under construction. We're recommending that, uh, elementary school in Dixon area be next. Uh, Catherine Lake would be next, and that's where we're talking about county, to see if the schedule can be expedited. Uh, middle school expansion at Northwoods Park Middle with twenty twenty-four, elementary school in twenty twenty-five to address the needs, similar to what I talked about. And then in twenty twenty-seven, looking at that ten-year horizon, we're looking at another elementary or middle school.
The, the costs have exceeded, uh, what our original plan with the county was, and that's because we've increased capacity, right?
No, sir.
We haven't gone from six hundred to eight hundred?
Well, we, we increased the capacity, but our cost.
If you go back to the previous.
Yes, sir. I mean, we increased our.
Six hundred?
We increased our capacities, but we didn't increase the costs. We've been good stewards of the money they provided us.
No, I'm talking about for future, West Central and New Southern. Six hundred, six hundred. These are going to eight hundred.
I would, yes, we would recommend eight hundred students, basically, that's where.
So the costs are going up because we have increased the capacity.
They may.
And we're going to build in. Is that correct?
Depending on, we, we'll take a look at that as we move forward, but, um, well, we.
Okay. I, I guess the question I have is on the original agreement, the amounts are different than what we have on this.
Mr. Williams, what we would do is, um, we would, we'd go out to bid with the initial agreement at six hundred student capacity, with alternates to increase capacity. So when we get the bids back, then at that point in time, if it is over, over the amount that was required, then we would have to address that with the board and then maybe with the county as well. If the eight hundred student capacity school comes in under that number, I think it's win-win for everybody because.
Just like Dixon Middle.
And Richlands Elementary.
Well, construction costs are increasing sixteen percent, so it's gonna be a little bit difficult one.
The one, the one thing that we would recommend though is making sure we have enough core capacity in, in, uh, new construction, no matter what we do. So that way, if we add more classrooms, it's gonna be able to absorb all the additional students.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to get at is why wouldn't we just automatically go with an initial bid of eight hundred students per school, as opposed to six hundred with alternate bids to adding the two hundred? We already know we need that capacity.
And that's something we, we can do. I mean.
That, that would be my recommendation if we get to that point.
I think that's a smart recommendation.
I think it is too.
Yep. I mean, look at Jacksonville Commons Middle, two years after it was built and occupied, we had to go in and add additional classrooms onto it.
And historically, what we've done though is we've, we've done alternates, so what we give the flexibility going forward.
I think Steve's giving you the history. I think as we move forward, our history's gonna change to where we're gonna recommend.
Eight hundred.
Steve, I just, I think that's where we're heading. That's where we've been. So I think what Mr. Williams was trying to say and, um, Madam Chair is, we need to start projecting from eight hundred and move forward from there.
We can do that. So in summary. Take a break. In summary, um, we're seeing strong growth in student population, okay? Um, you're also seeing that it's, uh, if you look at the LIP SAC report again, what you'll see is that, uh, historically, we've grown at one point two percent per year, two hundred students. I think, uh, years five through ten, they're looking at it slowing down to about one point two. Um, but we're still seeing continued growth. Um, population growth is primarily in the elementary schools, is where we see the most of it. House Bill thirteen ninety has placed classroom needs at several, has placed additional classroom needs at several of our elementary schools. And, uh, ten-year projection indicates a high need for additional elementary schools. Any questions? At, at this time, and, um, if, if the board, uh, is willing, um, staff would recommend that they accept the, uh, SAC report with, uh, capacity charts and, um, and, and also looking at, uh, um, transposing, uh, the Catherine Lake Elementary School and Dixon Elementary.
Actionizing to begin with, and we had this linked to discussion, so I think we can accept the report is given.
Okay.
But the board itself's gonna have to entertain a motion to, um, change the school order. If the board is okay with that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that would change the order.
Okay, and, uh, Paul had a second. Any other discussion or comments?
And this is just flipping to Dixon area and then the.
And Madam Chair, is there any questions on that?
Yeah.
Questions for most as a staff? You know, um, yeah, that area's just exceeded our expectations over the last few years, and obviously, you know, um, there's a lot of industry, a lot of infrastructure being built down there. If anybody's not been down in the Snitch Ferry area, it's just not recognizable almost anymore in terms of when you're heading to Topsail. So, um, you could, we'll only see continued growth there, so.
Is that gonna have to be approved by the county?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna make a request to increase one of those schools by year? You know, there's a note that said we might look into that. I just wonder if we need to do it both at the same time?
Right now, we're just voting on if we're gonna change the order, and that was Mr. Williams' motion. How about if we vote on it, then you ask a question again? So, okay? So all in favor, so, yeah, Paul seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're gonna have them approve this in a couple of months, go back and ask for an increase for a year on one of the schools? Should we just make the request all at one time instead of them having to do it twice?
So, so there's been discussion among, I think we've been championed to, uh, talk between our staffs in terms of what we can do. Advancing, you know, is it a possibility? And there's a lot of financial situations to that. So we've been talking back and forth with the county manager and our finance, uh, officer, and Jeff and I have talks as well in, in collaboration to figure out what could be done in terms of maybe expediting a school. Maybe, maybe we could do both schools at the same time and, and what that looks like. They had to. So in turn, they had to go back to their financial, I think it's Carter. Jeff?
Uh, the, the Corders are the financial advisors on the, uh, capital building fund model that was built in the joint funding.
So, um, they've been looking at that, and actually, uh, their staff has been in also in some conversations, not knowing of, of us with your own county commissioner. So if some of you had heard some discusses about that, it didn't really come back to, to our staff in terms of what they had come up with as a scenario, until last week. And we sat down with them last week after we had heard some rumors about it. Because as far as we were not, um, known, we were working among our staffs, and we wanted to simultaneously take it to boards if there's gonna be any recommendations or something to look at. So right now, it's just a work in progress in terms of what we're looking at. Um.
So we still have that information to do right now?
We're still, well, we're still looking at that information in terms of what the scenarios may look like, but, um.
Well, if, if the, uh, state bond passes, that's gonna change the landscape a little bit on the financial side.
It, it will, but, uh, the state bond, they, they can't even pass until they go back into session in May, so. Are we gonna have perhaps staff, joint staff, the county and the Board of Education getting together, coming up with a solution, and having another joint meeting with the county commissioners to discuss potential changes to only the capital assets needs?
Well, I think when Jeff and Rick are handling those discussions with, uh, Mr. Cotton and their financial, is it David Cole? David Cole, that they'll bring that information back and when to set a date.
Well, I think David was really trying to find what the appetite, uh, appetite was in order to have a joint session if it's feasible for us to have that conversation. So once we get the green light on that, Madam Chair, uh, I'll notify Madam Chair about maybe a work session, have that discussion.
But Bob, that, you're right on that, on that bond, but I, but it will be, if they approve it, it'll be on the ballot in November, which will, you know, help us hopefully.
And I don't want this board to think that we're, we're, we're not making any decisions whatsoever. We're just trying to find scenarios that would better fit what our needs are in our school system and also fit the capacity needs of what the county has in terms of financing.
The point that I'm trying to make though, you're right, Madam Chair, it would be on, on the ballot in November. If they approve it to go on the ballot in November though, we have to start our planning for schools in twenty twenty-one by October this year, I believe. So it would be before. Is that not correct?
If you're looking at that timing and, and if, if they're able to, you know, what would be a great outcome of being able to do both schools at the same time, because not only does it more immediately address our capacity needs that have been thrust upon us, but it also allows that entire section of the, that whole side of the county to go through one redistricting rather than two. So there's a lot of advantages there if they find that they have the capacity to do it. So in order to meet that timeline, I think what you're saying is we really need to, to work on that now rather than waiting on the outcome of the bond.
Absolutely, because that, that, that bond has one school for us, basically. We'll replace one school.
And, and as you can see on the list, there're gonna be, you know, needs for a school at least every two years, so we could very quickly use, you know, the, the bond money as well. And that would help, uh, ease some of their burden.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more in line of if the bond passes and we're able to take those funds and build one of our two urgently needed schools, we would then have additional funding.
Right.
That we had set aside, that we could then roll back into the middle school expansions to accelerate that process.
But one final though, our conversation's right now is that bond would be nice to have, but I think their consideration is in their capacity currently. Without the bond, can they move it up at simultaneously at the same time? And we're waiting on those conversations to continue so we can have either a work session on that. And then if the, if the bond does pass, that's kind of, you know, get out of jail free card, you know, we got, we got an opportunity to.
I think your point about that timing, it is well taken, plus the fact of, you know, how many times over the last fifteen years has it always been discussion about, well, can the state do a bond, can the state do a bond? And it always put off what our timetable and needs were. And that's why it came to the joint educational funding policy to lay out a ten-year, uh, building horizon, that we're gonna do these things regardless of what the state does. Now, if the state comes through, it can ease things, but we can't do another, get back into the wait-and-see approach. The other part about that bond, you've got several steps to have to go through. First, um, you know, it has to be approved by the legislature to put it on the ballot. And so we don't know what, uh, language might change in that process, uh, getting to that. We don't know if it will be approved. Then if it goes out to the public in November, we don't know if that would be approved. There's a lot of, a lot of ifs. If it stays in the current form, uh, that the bill has been, there is gonna be a match requirement. And I think I've calculated ours will be about two dollars and eight cents, uh, per dollar we get. So you can kind of look at it as a buy-two-get-one-free program, and so if we go ahead and get them to buy two, there'll be one free, uh, coming up next down the road.
Sounds good. Any other questions that Jeff might need to answer or Rick? Let's move to the next item, and then we're gonna, uh, probably ask for a closed session in a minute, and you can take a break in between that, if that's okay. Uh, in your packet, um, we have, uh, the review of open meetings laws and the public record policies. And I, I, I really want everybody to understand that I responded to an email and sent out to every one of you that we needed to stop the, uh, I respectfully requested that we stop the email trail. And the reason for that wasn't that I cared that you discussed it, but when we did that via email, it was violating the open, uh, meetings law. So that was the reason for that. And then the second part of this is what are public records? Once we send an email to each other or to Rick or to somebody, it's a public record, but it's not our record individually to release to anyone. There is a process for that. It becomes the property of the Board of Education. So it's, um, it is not probably the best thing for us to take it upon ourselves to release public records, and particularly in the case of the agendas for, uh, March fourteenth with some of the information there, 'cause we were trying to keep the media out of the schools that day for the purpose of having respect and kindness and civility. So I, I just bring that to your, your, not, up to your, uh, for you to understand that it wasn't to usurp, uh, any power on my part. It was to protect the board as a whole. And I do request in the future that if, uh, you need an email to be received by someone else, that you probably need to go through the superintendent's office to do that. And if, uh, that being said, Steve is going to introduce this next item.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, can we comment on that for just a second?
Sure. Sure.
I'm not sure where the legal guidance for the individual is not ours, but the legal guidance that I've been given from the School of Government says that, as the physical custodian of the emails you may can receive, using your government issued or personal device, you have an obligation to retain them and to provide access to them.
Well, that's right, but they're not your emails, they are emails that belong to this Board of Education. They're not a public record for me to release, they're not a public record for Rick to release.
We might want to look into that a little further.
Well, we have our attorney who has looked into that, I didn't say it was illegal, Jonathan.
I understand.
I'm saying that it is not the proper thing to do.
Well, in the law, in all my experience, very few times is the word must or shall used, and in this, it doesn't give you an option, it says it must be released, personally, by the person. So, I mean, the School of Government's pretty good, so.
I've got a quick question as regards to, who is our records officer?
It would be the superintendent and his designated.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have a policy that deals with public records requests, and so assuming the board wants to comply with its own policy, it can follow the directions of that, which is you make a request in writing and then determining on whether or not those records are readily available or have to be produced or whatever.
But can we require a request in writing? Case law is pretty clear on a verbal request is--
Well, our policy says it's a request in writing, so if you want to change your policy, then that's fine, but that's, you've adopted that as a procedure to use, and I think the courts will say that's a reasonable thing for a board to do, to know whether in fact you've had a request or not. And so, and we've been doing that for 20-plus years, so.
Any other comments? Thank you for letting me share that. Steve?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board? In accordance with General Statute 143-318-111 regarding closed sessions, staff has identified two properties that could potentially be used for elementary schools. The first site is owned by Hoosier Daddy LLC, that's H-O-O-Z-I-E-R, okay? Hoosier Daddy.
Say it again.
Indiana Hoosier Daddy. And the second property is owned by W.R. Willis. Do you have any questions?
Well, since that is before, since that is before us, we have a motion to go into--
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor say aye, and let's take about a five, 10-minute break.
So can we face a season?
We have a motion to return to open session--
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to address the business that we discussed in closed session, and that would be to give staff an authority to go forward on some negotiations on some properties.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. One item that's not on your agenda, but I just want to give this as an information item, so we will have a record of it on YouTube when Laurie posts that, is remember that we do have an appointment that is coming up for the Coastal Carolina Board of Trustees, and that application is under the personnel hyperlink, and we need to see if we can't get that information out, and I'll also make that announcement again on Tuesday night when we have our board meeting.
Is that the new hyperlink?
That's the new hyperlink.
And our website will go online.
Yeah, it'll go online on Monday. It's under Human Resources employment opportunities, but because we want to make sure that it's seen--
We're going to move it.
--it is also under, I've centered both--
Okay, good.
--the Board of Education, so when you click on the Board of Education, you will see that listed as an opportunity for folks to be considered.
Will the new website have a section up there like we have right now with the news, so, you know, we flash those pictures, or we change the--
Mr. Anderson can probably link the news items for the, for the new website.
Oh, the three items that are under the picture rotating?
They haven't seen a site.
Oh, okay.
So--
Yeah, there are three, there are three district news items that are coming under the rotating pictures, there's a big part of the top of the page is rotating pictures that Laurie has been helping to take, and below that are district news items, and that's where we'll post those, and we're going to have those on a rotating basis that they'll kind of rotate through with information there. Below that, in the bottom left-hand corner of the main page, is a district announcements section, and we're putting some other information there. We've got the, when it comes live, we'll have the kindergarten registration information, things like that will go in the district announcement space underneath that.
So is this going into one of those two?
It'll be under board and also be under person, Human Resources.
Two questions on it, Madam Chair, when is the appointment, when will that be made?
We will make that, it takes effect in July.
The deadline for the application?
Well, the applications are always open, and they just have to come back and say that they'd like to be reconsidered. We probably will vote on it, Jonathan, in August.
So we just, we've got plenty of time to get it out?
Oh, yeah, and I think that David Heatherly will also share that.
No, August is probably a little bit delayed. I would say either, I would say probably the June meeting is when you would vote.
Well, we need to see how many, we did it late last time too.
Okay.
We did, so we'll see how many applications we'll get, it's going to be the important thing. Thank you for letting me interject that. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Good meeting, thank you for these workshops.